Hi, and welcome to the Board of Health and the Board of Selectment Meeting of March 30th, 2020. This is Judy Giorgio, the health agent. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify the chairman. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Chatham Board of Health and Board of Selectmen is being conducted. Participation. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for Brian, do you hear the call, the feedback? If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify the chairman. No one in person? Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place.
He just told on somebody as they're
This meeting of the Chatham Board of Health
Please make sure everybody mute your phone or computer.
... participation. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter. Brian, do you hear the call, the feedback? No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings, access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the number on the screen and post it on the agenda. Despite our best efforts, in some cases, we may not be able to provide for real-time access, and we will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. Please mute your phone speakers until we ask for questions or comments. I'm going to now turn this meeting over to Board of Health Chairman John Beckley.
Welcome, everyone, to the Chatham Board of Health meeting for March 30th, 2020. We only have one agenda item on today's listing, and I'd like to get right to that. But before I do that, let me do a roll call to see what members of the Chatham Board of Health are on the call. Dr. Noble Hansen?
Yes, here.
Dr. Alan Ward?
Alan Ward.
Ed Sheehan. Ed, are you on the call?
Ed Sheehan.
Burton Siegel.
Bert Siegel, I'm on the call.
Ron Bromin.
I'm here.
Okay, and myself, John Beckley. So all of us are on the call. The first and only agenda item relates to a variance request from the Real Estate Transfer Regulation for Hendrick and Karen Lynn Christensen at 18 Tapan Drive. They are represented by attorney Andrew Singer. Is Mr. Singer available to?
This is Marion Rose. I'm also an attorney at Singer &amp; Singer, and I'm here on behalf of them.
Okay, can you speak a little bit more loud, a little bit louder, please?
Certainly, yes. Can you hear me now?
Yes, much better. Thank you. You have the floor.
Perfect. We have requested relief from this because the building is vacant. We haven't, Hendricks have no intent to live in the place. They actually are living in Singapore at the moment, and they're going to eventually raise and replace this. They're next-door neighbors, but they have no intention of living in the property.
Okay. So the Board of members have received a memorandum from Judy outlining some of these same particulars, and Judy has recommended that the Board grant a variance to allow the transfer of property without the upgrade of the septic system within 90 days with the following conditions: The property is to remain vacant until such time that the new dwelling and the new septic system are constructed and a certificate of compliance is issued by the Health Division. And number two, that the water at the property is disconnected and the meter removed until the new dwelling is constructed and ready to be moved into. Discussion, comments, questions by any Board of Health members or the attorney representing the applicant?
I have a question for Judy. We've done this several times before, haven't we, Judy? Ron Bromin speaking.
Yes, we have. This is, it's assessable, but they are going to raise the property and rebuild, so they need more time to get their plans together.
Okay, thank you.
And there's no way for them to occupy the premises with the water turned off? So the Board has an assurance, the Board has an assurance there'll be no occupancy until the new septic system is in place, and that's really the objective of the regulation.
Correct.
This is Bert. Could you also have fill-in the pit?
Can't hear you, Burton.
Could you also have fill-in the leasing pit, the cesspool?
Um, I don't, yeah, I wouldn't want them to do that yet, just in case they, there is some minimal use of the prop. I don't know, yeah. I suppose we could ask them to, but usually we don't do that until they get the construction people on the site.
Thank you, Judy.
Any further questions? Any comments from Board members? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to?
Move that we accept this variance with the provisions?
Yep. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, two seconds. Is there anybody listening in from the public that wants to comment on this matter before I call the vote?
This is Steve Buckley. Can you hear me?
Yes. What was your?
Hi, it's Steve Buckley again. Sorry, I was muting and unmuting myself by accident. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay.
Did you have a comment, Steve?
Yes, I have a question and then perhaps a comment. Is the, I'm looking at the screen on Channel 18 Live, and it just shows a picture of some boats in the water. I'm wondering, are there any documents or anything that the Board has already received about this? Anything written from the applicant?
This correspondence from the attorney to Judy, the town health agent.
Is that supposed to be available to the public?
I'm sure it could be made available.
There's, there were no plans for this because it's assessable, so it was just an email request for a variance from the real estate inspection regs. So I, I mean, we have a letter from the attorney requesting it. That's all there is. We could put them, make them available after the meeting, but, you know, they were been available here at the office up to this point since the meeting was posted.
But not publicly available, is that right?
Publicly available if anybody wanted to see them, of course.
Come to the office.
They could contact me. I could send them, or they, you know, I could make copies and leave for people. We've been available.
Uh, yeah, okay, that's interesting. I was under the impression that the offices were closed, and that's, that everybody was working remotely.
No, we have, in the annex, we have a skeleton staff working. We are answering emails and phone calls and providing people with documents that they need.
As requested.
As requested, yeah.
Okay, not made available, can't walk in and look at them. Okay. Yeah, okay, that's it. Just wanted to point out that there was no documents available, made available prior to the meeting.
Again, there really aren't any documents. Only the request is all that we have, so.
And that's a, that's a public record, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I meant. Public records were not made available prior to the meeting. Okay, thanks.
Okay, let's go ahead, and I'm going to call the question. All Board members in favor of the motion that was made and seconded, when I call your name, please vote yes or no. Dr. Noble Hansen?
This is Noble, yes.
Dr. Alan Ward?
Alan, yes.
Ed Sheehan?
Ed, yes.
Burton Siegel?
Bert, yes.
And Ron Bromin?
Yes.
Okay, and I vote yes as well. So the vote is unanimous to approve the variance as requested, and we don't have, the only other business we could do, but we're going to defer on, is approval of last month's meeting minutes. So at this point, I'd like to turn over the meeting to Shereen Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and noting the time to be 4:13 PM. I'd like to open our meeting and call a roll of the Board of Selectmen. When I call your name, please say present. Selectmen Kokolos?
Present.
Selectmen Nacastro?
Present.
Selectmen Metters?
Present.
Selectmen Dykens?
Present.
And would town staff from our office identify themselves as well?
Sure. Jill Goldsmith, Town Manager.
Okay. And we have Dr. Dunkinson and Anna Lee on as well. All right, so we're obviously in very, and thank you for the Board of Health meeting, this joint meeting with us. Obviously, we're in some very uncharted waters. I've said that before. I think we're doing the best we can in communicating and getting the business of the town together. Dr. Dunkinson, are you able to give us an update on the COVID-19 issue as it is reflected in Chatham?
Yeah, thanks, Shereen. Yeah, just for the record, it's Robert Dunkinson, Director of Health and Natural Resources. Let me give you a quick update on what's going on. I just got the latest information from Mass. Department of Public Health. Right now, in the Commonwealth, we have 5,752 cases. There are 52, sorry, 56 deaths statewide, and at the latest count, as of 4 o'clock this afternoon, we now have 173 cases listed in Barnstable County. However, I do caution folks, there is, in the state's database, there are another 489 cases with the county listed as unknown, so there could be additional cases in Barnstable County, but at this point, we just don't know that definitively or not. As of earlier this afternoon, when I checked, we still have only one case in Chatham of COVID-19. There were several prior cases, but those have now cleared, meaning they've passed the appropriate time period for self-quarantining, and they are no longer listed as active cases. So we have one active case still in Chatham. Just to give you an idea of some other things that have been going on, as everybody knows, the governor has implemented a shelter-in-place order for the Commonwealth through the 7th. Nationally, it has been, or the guidance for social distancing has been extended through most of April. Schools in the Commonwealth have now closed until May 4th. There's been a lot of concern expressed in the community and the Cape, and frankly, all around the country about people transiting between areas known to be hotspots. It originally centered around the New York metropolitan area, but we now have hotspots picking up in Louisiana, around New Orleans. The entire state of California is considered a hotspot, and we have several other states where we expect to see substantial spikes in cases over the next several days that would be considered hotspots. So last Tuesday, at the behest of the Board of Health, we issued a press release requesting that any folks coming into Chatham from, at that point in time, it was primarily the New York metropolitan area, that they self-quarantine for the 14-day recommended period from CDC and Mass. Department of Public Health. Since that time, Barnstable County came out with a similar advisory, and then Charlie Baker, Governor of Massachusetts, also followed up with a statewide advisory. And they've been distributing information relative to that at airports around the Commonwealth, on interstate billboards and message boards, at train stations, and other localities. Other states have taken similar stance, and in some cases, such as Rhode Island, they've taken even a more aggressive stance. Rhode Island going to the point of having National Guard and State Troopers pulling over all cars with out-of-state plates, determining what they're doing there, whether they're just transiting through the state or they intend to stay. And if they do intend to stay, again, advising them of the 14-day At this point, in terms of what's going on in Chatham, we've gotten that message out to people through either the town website or through our electronic message boards. I do know there's a lot of concern in the community about, you know, people not complying. That's a very difficult thing to judge, whether or not somebody has been here, frankly, longer, and had been here all winter, and simply lived out of state for other periods of time, or they're a recent transplant, you know, has recently come into the state, and we hope that they are abiding by the self-quarantine period of 14 days. But people do have to go out and get groceries and whatnot. But at the very least, we expect everyone to be practicing the social distancing guidelines, meaning try to maintain at least six feet away from your fellow humans while you do those runs that necessitate things like grocery pickups or prescription drugs. And just for everybody at home, if you need assistance with that, if you are self-quarantining, or you have other reasons why you're unable to get out, you can contact the Emergency Operations Center at 945-5191, and we will assist you as we can. We have volunteers on standby pretty much every day, Monday through Friday, from our Community Emergency Response Team, or CERT, that we have coordinated with our neighboring towns of Brewster, Orleans, and Harwich, and we can make prescription runs for you. We can make food runs for you and assist with other household needs that you may have. I know the Council on Aging as well has put a message out to their folks, making them aware of what we have available. And we've had, you know, a few people take advantage of it. We had some calls for prescription runs last week. We had a couple of calls for shopping runs, and we're trying to get those done as quickly as we possibly can. Over the weekend, our CERT team was involved with distributing over 100 boxes of food to veterans, their families. They were put together by a private military organization. They were delivered to Chatham. We held them. We distributed them on Saturday, and it was basically 100 distributed throughout the four towns that our CERT team participates in. So that went very well. One of the, some of the other things that we've had inquiries from people from is how can they know when somebody in the town has been diagnosed with COVID-19? So everyone is clear, we get our information from the Mass. Department of Public Health. That information is not always timely, meaning somebody could be, you know, tested positive today. It may not get into the system that notifies us until tomorrow. As I indicated, as of this afternoon, we only had one positive case in Chatham. I wouldn't, I would caution people not to worry so much about people that are testing positive. I think at this point, the important thing is everybody should probably assume that the large majority of our population may be infected, and that's why social distancing is so critically important. Because one of the problems that I'm sure everybody's aware of is the limitations on testing that we currently have. So there may be a large number of people in the population that have COVID-19 or have the coronavirus, but they haven't been tested for it yet. We are still in a situation where there are still some fairly stringent requirements to get tested, so we're not yet at a position where anybody can get tested. Hopefully, that is going to change in the short term, because FDA did approve a rapid test over the weekend that can be performed in doctors' offices and other localities. So we expect the testing to become much more widespread in the coming weeks. But I would strongly suggest that everyone assume that the person standing near you may have COVID-19 or the coronavirus. And so take the appropriate precautions. If you display any of the symptoms at all, the recommendation has been and continues to be that you should self-quarantine yourself at home. The symptoms that people want to look for are a fever, shortness of breath, and a cough. You don't necessarily have to have all three of those, but if you have one of those and it persists, you should self-quarantine, get in touch with your local doctor, and see whether or not you would qualify for testing. The Commonwealth has also opened up a new option for folks. There is a website that people can access, and we put the link up on the town's website, and it's basically a symptom checker. If you think you have the appropriate symptoms for COVID-19, you can go onto that website, run through various symptoms, and the symptom, that symptom checker will help you determine whether or not you should be reaching out to your doctor or taking other precautions. But again, I strongly urge, if you've got any of those symptoms, the best thing you can do for yourself and for the rest of our community is simply to stay at home until those symptoms pass or you've been tested and the test comes back negative. We've also gotten a couple of questions about what does contact mean, because one of the things we always talk about in a communicable disease is the tracking of close contacts. For this particular circumstance, close contact is being defined by CDC and DPH and others as you really need to be within six feet of someone for 15 or more minutes. So if you're just passing someone on the sidewalk or passing someone in the grocery store, and you've taken all the other proper precautions, that shouldn't be an issue. But if you're standing outside, talking to someone, and you're within six feet, and it drags on more than 15 minutes, that's when you have the potential. There are a lot of asymptomatic people. There are a lot of people, meaning they have the COVID, the coronavirus, they're not displaying any symptoms, which makes it that much more difficult to tell. But again, if you're just simply passing folks on the street and things like that, it's probably not going to be an issue. Again, if you're someone who has underlying medical conditions, or you're in that higher-risk population of 60 and above, we strongly urge you try to limit as much as possible any contact with any other people, whether they are exhibiting symptoms or not. Because at this point, there's really no way to know until testing becomes much more widespread. With that, I think I'll stop there, and we can answer questions.
Thanks, Bob. That was a really comprehensive overview of what's been going on. I'm going to call down my Board to see if they have any questions, one at a time, rather than just speaking out. I think that'd be a more efficient method to do this. And then, when we get through that, if there's any follow-up from the Board, they can certainly just jump in. Peter, do you have any questions for Bob?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. And how are you, Dr. Bob?
I'm here.
Yeah. The question I have to have has to do with something you brought up already, the people that are coming from out-of-state and coming into Massachusetts. We've had a number of emails that point out, like you mentioned, that Rhode Island, and interestingly enough, Florida on the Keys has instituted a number of things, but there are a number, of course, Florida had their own problems with their beaches, that are, there are people that are coming back here. I guess the question is, the determination of how much enforcement can be made. Can we do that at a local level, or is that a state requirement? The governor has said on a number of occasions that he's putting out advisories, but, you know, it's not unreasonable to try to do some sort of enforcement.
Yeah, you know, that's a question we'd have to discuss with town council. You know, it's always difficult, streets and highways or public places. We, you know, we can't set up toll booths at town under normal circumstances, whether this would rise to some level where we could do something more aggressive. You know, I think based on what we've heard from Governor Baker, as well as some of the other states, you know, these are more advisories. Rhode Island is taking a very proactive approach. Again, they're not necessarily telling people you can't come in, but they're saying to people, if you're going to come in, you have to abide, or we expect you to abide by certain rules. To what extent they're enforcing those, I haven't seen anything definitive yet, other than they're making people aware of the, you know, the self-quarantine 14-day period kind of thing. And, you know, Massachusetts is now doing that as well, not quite as aggressively, if you would say Rhode Island is, and some of the other areas like Florida and all, where they basically said anybody coming in from certain locations is expected to self-quarantine. But again, I'm not aware that they're, you know, we're not posting guards outside of people's houses.
Thank you, Bob. Peter, Selectmen Kokolos, do you have, I mean, Nacastro, do you have any questions for Dr. Bob?
Yes, but I just wanted to make a comment about that issue. It would appear to me that if a stronger stance were to be taken, it would have to come from the governor. I, Governor Baker, when he announced his advisory the other day, I think I, Governor Baker, when he announced his advisory the other day, I think explicitly said he was not going to enforce it. So I think it would be very difficult. And I think there is a legal question as to what authority the local municipality might have in that regard. And put aside for this, for a moment, the, the issue of staffing to be able to conduct that. My question, Bob, is in the media over the last week or so, we keep hearing the term presumptive cases, and I'm not sure what that means. It's never really been defined. Do you have any, can you shed a little light on that possibly?
Yeah, when, when the testing first began, at, look, originally, the only tests that were being done in Massachusetts were being done at the State Health Department lab. And those tests then required, those tests, the positive test results from the state, from the state public health lab, required confirmation with the CDC. So anything that came out of the state public health lab initially was considered a presumptive positive, and then was confirmed by CDC. That has changed, you know, over time as public health labs got better equipment and better reagents and whatnot, as well as the commercial labs coming on board. So now we'd no longer have to send samples down to CDC in Atlanta to get that confirmation, if you will. So we're no longer using the presumptive positive anymore. You're either positive or negative based on tests either done at the state health lab, and any of the number of hospital labs that are now up and running, or the commercial labs that are now doing it.
Okay, thank you. No more questions.
Okay, thanks, Dean. Selectmen Metters, do you have any questions for Bob?
Yes, can you hear me okay? Hello?
Yes.
Okay. Can you comment on, there's been a lot of talk about, you know, access to beaches, playgrounds, skate parks, all those public areas. Can you comment on that? And can you also comment if you have any local thoughts on certain actions, and if those actions, and if we have the resources to, to achieve those actions?
Okay, the first one's easier, the second one's a little bit more difficult. My recommendation at this point, in the absence of any obvious areas where people are not following the social distancing guidelines, is to keep our beaches, parks, trails, and everything open, because I think as this thing goes on longer, you know, when, when you're trying to keep your entire family in the house, day in and day out, that becomes more difficult. So I think as long as we can provide an outlet for people, and as long as they're, you know, practicing the social distancing, I don't see an issue with that. I know, you know, there was concern at the Lighthouse overlook, you know, that the, every spot was taken and it was heavy. I'm not worried, frankly, if people, you know, if all the parking spots are taken. And as I said at the beginning, you know, walking up and down the stairs there, yes, people are within that six-foot distance, but only for a moment or two, as they pass by. And then once they get out to the beaches, you know, there's plenty of room for people to spread out and, and maintain the appropriate distance. Now, you know, one of the other things that I think we have to keep in mind is, you know, we, sometimes we see groups of people together. They tend to be family units. So, you know, mom and dad and a couple of kids, they may all be walking closely together. Keep in mind, when they're in their house, they're close together. You know, it's really between them and other families that we want to maintain that social distance. So as long as, yeah.
Guys, I'm all supportive of the keeping the beaches open. I'm a family of six, it is our saving grace to go down to the beach and just kind of blow off some steam. So that philosophy, I'm completely supportive of. Just to make sure I was clear on my first question, what happens more, more of an isolated location like the skate park? Because I've gotten a couple of questions specifically about our skate park. Is it a very, you know, condensed area, concise area that clearly we're not wiping down or doing anything with? So, and it's a, so on something like that, how do we, or should we do anything to address that?
Yeah, if we have areas like the skate park and some of the playgrounds, and we get reports, or we see people congregating, those are areas that I would then make a recommendation that we shut them down. You know, because obviously, you know, they, they tend to be close, there's a lot of hand touching, especially with the kids in the playgrounds and whatnot. You know, I can tell you the couple of times I've gone by the playground behind the community center, it has been empty, because I think people understand that. You know, the mayor of Boston last night indicated that they were shutting down their playgrounds and basketball carts, because frankly, people weren't abiding by the social distancing guidelines. The times I've been out and about here in Chatham, I haven't witnessed that. So, you know, those are things that I'm looking for. But I think if we do get reports that that's happening consistently, then we would need to take the appropriate action.
Any further questions, Cory?
The second part was, any, you know, ideas or future steps for us locally? And do we have the resources to take those actions?
You know, I, I would have to say no. I think so far, we've gotten pretty much everything in place. You know, there's not a whole lot else we can do at this point, except try to, not necessarily ride it out, but ride it out and let's see where, you know, the social distancing goes, if we start to see the, you know, the curve starting to flatten out and whatnot, which so far, we haven't seen. I just, you know, finished plotting today's data, and unfortunately, the little blip that I thought we were seeing from yesterday is not panning out. You know, the cases are still going up. You know, other than that, we're trying to provide the services to the people in the community that really need them through the EOC and through the CERT. You know, as long as people abide by the social distancing, I want to keep, you know, the parks and whatnot open for people to have that release. You know, unless the, either the federal government or the state government comes down with additional actions that we should take, or we should consider. You know, I, I think we're doing everything to the best that we can. You know, we're trying to maintain town services, and I'm sure Jill can speak to this. You know, we're trying to maintain town services remotely and with minimal skeletal staff, because we know this is a big hit to individual citizens, as well as the business community. And we're trying to, you know, minimize that to the extent we can, but still protect our town employees.
All right, Cory?
Thank you, yes, thank you.
Selectmen Duncan, do you have any questions or comments for Dr. Bob or us?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, everyone, and thanks for organizing this teleconference, or conference call, I should say. I happened to receive that Council on Aging message on the phone last night, I thought was extremely well-done. I would suggest that the Council on Aging kind of repeat that every once in a while. I don't know if daily, but every other day or something. I thought it was, it was very informative, and it would be of comfort if I were even older than I am, and would want to know what's going on. So I thought it was very effective, that's a comment. I would agree with Selectmen Castro that we would abide by the governor's advisory in terms of those that travel here from afar, whether it's New York City, or Louisiana, or California, and that folks take it upon themselves to self-quarantine if they come from, from out of town. Bob Duncanson, you mentioned we have one active case here in Chatham. I was interested in, in how many cases we've had in Chatham that are now considered not active. And for the Board of Health and, and for us to be informed, how actively do we educate those active cases in terms of their travels, their self-quarantining, et cetera? Are we, we active in the management, or are we not active? I'd like to just understand how proactive we are or aren't.
Okay. Yeah, we had several other cases, and mainly, they were in folks that had traveled outside to some of the hotspot zones early in this process. They came back, they self-quarantined, they've passed the, the 14-day, you know, period and whatnot. So they're, they're no longer considered, you know, active cases, if you will. The way it works in Chatham, because we don't have any public health nurses, and that's not unusual in smaller communities, we rely on the VNA. And, and under our contract with the VNA, they do all the case follow-up. So when somebody is, you know, has a positive test result, and they're entered into the system, the VNA then follows up with the individual, they do the contract, contact tracing, meaning they get in touch with all the folks that that person's had close contact with. And again, it kind of goes back to my earlier definition of what we're now defining as close contact. But VNA follows up with them, there is guidelines from the Mass DPH in terms of what it means to self-quarantine or self-isolate, how long that's for. And then VNA generally follows up with each one, you know, each individual that is positive on a daily basis to make sure, you know, their condition hasn't changed, that their symptoms are starting to abate, and that they are still abiding by the self-quarantine guidelines. So, you know, that frees us up to do some of the other things that we need to do in terms of trying to keep track of the bigger picture. You know, so VNA works out very well for us, and they do that for most of the towns on the Cape, just because most towns are just too small to have their own, you know, full-time nurse. And frankly, at this point, you know, if there were a surge of positives, having the additional resources within the VNA would definitely be helpful.
Yeah, that, that's helpful, Bob. Does the VNA then, then give a report to you or the Board of Health or anybody on, on how those active cases are doing?
We have access at the staff level into the state system where everything is, is uploaded. And so Judy and I go in there two, three, four times a day, and, and just keep an eye on that and what's been uploaded. But that's where the, you know, the VNA case person would put, you know, their notes pretty much every day, if you will, of, you know, what they, you know, the contact they had, and, and what the results of that contact were. So we have access to that, as I'm sure everyone can understand, you know, that is private medical information. And, and, you know, that's one of the issues that we've been dealing with early on in this, was, you know, there are certain strict guidelines under HIPAA and others as to what kind of information can be given out to the public. And I know, early on, you know, we even had issues with what we were able to share with first responders, and that was subsequently cleared up, so that we can share, you know, at least the address with first responders, so they know where the positive case is, should they have to respond to that location. But we can't share much more information with that, we certainly can't share that kind of information with the public. And I know that, you know, that's, that's been a frustration on the part of some members of the public, that they don't know, just how do I know if my neighbor's got it? Well, unfortunately, we can't tell you that, because we have to abide by those privacy, you know, rules and regulations that are in place. And, and, you know, they're in place all across the country, it's not just Chatham.
Yeah, no, and I totally understand, and I totally appreciate that comment, Bob. I just want to make sure that those active cases do understand that they're to be quarantined, that's all.
Yep, yep, they do.
Yeah. My only other, my only other comment is, I totally agree with the previous speakers that we keep the beaches open, that's certainly would weigh in on the state of keeping them open. And that's all I have, thank you very much.
Thanks, Jeff. Dr. Bob, I just, I agree, I sent you a note over about some of the concerns I was hearing about Lighthouse Beach. And I really strongly feel that, you know, the, the water is a source of emotional and physical, you know, benefit to the town. And Selectmen Metter said the same thing. I, I was wondering if there was any way that we could beef up some sort of signage around the beach areas to remind people of that social distancing. I don't know if that's something that we need to do, but I appreciate some thought from the staff at some point to, to, on how they feel about that. Just to move on, I just wanted to move over to the Board of Health and see if Chairman Beckley had any questions for you? Chairman Beckley, do you have any questions for Dr. Duncanson?
No, no ma'am, I'm fine. I just heard a lot of good information from Dr. Bob today, I'm very satisfied.
Member Hansen Noble, do you have any, any questions for Dr. Duncanson?
Yeah, I was just wondering if he could again clarify this, several prior cases. Are the, are these positive COVID-19 cases that occurred in other areas and then traveled to Chatham? After they've been released, or how would we even know that?
We would only know that at the staff level, based on the information that's up on the state's website that has that type of information. In one of the cases, it was a presumptive case, it turned out to be negative. In other cases, they were positive, they obviously acquired the infection somewhere else. Like I said, a couple of them were travel-related, you know, or they were coming back from hotspots. But they were early on in the, you know, early on during the time period, and they've since, you know, cleared the appropriate quarantine period. So they're no longer considered, if you will, active cases.
Can, can I clarify that, Bob?
Yeah.
We've only had one confirmed case of a resident in Chatham. The other cases that Bob is referring to are people who have been watched by the VNA because they either traveled from China or Italy, or they may have been a contact of a positive case. So all of those folks have gone through their quarantine and are fine. So we have only had one positive case in Chatham.
So Judy, those were, these priors were, were patients that were never actually diagnosed as positive COVID-19?
Correct. We did have one person as-
So it's only one real case in Chatham? We come back to that, that's good.
We had one person, as Bob said, that did get tested and it came back negative.
Right, okay, great. That's all I have.
Thank you, Noble. Ed, do you have any questions for Dr. Duncanson?
No.
Okay, thank you. Bert, do you have, are you still on? I'm not sure if you're still on, but do you have any questions for Dr. Duncanson?
Yeah, I'm still on. I think what, one thing we've learned from the spread of this disease worldwide is to be effective, the community has to act early. If we perceive more aggressive action is needed, I'm asking about what quarantine powers do we have as a local board, if any? I think you partially answered this, but I'd like you to look at that a little more. Did you get that?
I, I did. What I would, what I would say at this point is, let us review that with town council. Local boards do have some powers, but it's been a while since we've had to exercise them, as you can well imagine. So I defer to Judy and town council, and we'll come up when we can get back to the board.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, Bert, Bert, this is John Beckley. There are, in every state, old state statutes that gave, that gives, not gave, gives broad public health authority to local boards of health if they need to. And as Bob said, they're, they're rarely evoked locally, unless in very specific cases, such as, you know, a known TB case that refused to stay home, and, and local boards of health can draw on those statutes in those cases. But it would be tricky to try and fashion something on your own at, at the local level, I think. But I think the broad authority is there.
I think we need to watch this closely, not, if we're going to act, not do it too late.
Well, that's a good point.
Maybe start developing an action plan for somewhat. Anything else, Bert?
No, that's it for me, thank you.
You're welcome. Ron, do you have any questions for Dr. Duncanson?
No, I just have a couple of comments. My wife and I flew back from Florida, and we did go into the 14-day self-quarantine, and, you know, as we're now, but we're quarantining for other reasons. But I want to just go reach out to Dr. Duncanson and thank him for all the effort he's put into notifying us and letting us know what's going on in the town. I really appreciate it, I think it's a real plus. Okay, thank you.
Good point. Alan, do you have any questions for Dr. Duncanson?
No, I just have a couple of comments. I've been pretty appalled by the gaggles of people, like on the main street in Howard's Fort yesterday, there were about nine girls all in a huddle. And then on the bike path here on Oak Queen Anne, there was about eight bicyclists all in a huddle. And no one is hearing that. We also have a house that's sort of an air internet rental in the neighborhood, where there were 10 cars in the driveway over the weekend that now left. This isn't distancing in any way. That's all.
Thank you. I think we're all seeing cases of that, people not social distancing, and that's, I think, the level of frustration we're seeing from the general public at this time. I'm going to now, I think we've covered the Board of Health and the Board of Selectmen asking questions, and I was going to ask the public who is on the call if they have any questions for Dr. Duncanson, but I'd really appreciate- but I'd really appreciate it if you'd call me first, and I'll recognize who you are, and then you can proceed. Any questions from the public?
Steve Buckley, I have a question.
Okay, Stephen, go ahead.
Okay. I'm sorry, I was a little garbled. You said what the protocol was for unmuting.
Just roll calling your name out, and then I'd recognize you, which I have. So go ahead and ask a question.
Okay. I was going to suggest that with all the good information that's been put on the web page for the emergency or the COVID-19 webpage, I guess, if there was a way to set up some type of email alert so that every time something was added, and now there's, I see there's must be three dozen different documents or links or sources of information there that, that there'd be an email alert instead of, you know, instead of checking the website, you know, every so often, and then finding that there's a whole slew of new information that might alleviate people's fears that they're missing something if they could get some kind of text alert or email alert, like, like we do when we get, if people sign up for alerts from the Board of Selectmen, you know, meeting alert, things like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Sean, is that, or I'm not sure you'd be the person to ask, Craig, is that, is that a possibility with the town to be able to do that kind of, set that system up? Or maybe, maybe I should put it a different way. Perhaps that you, if you can answer it, that we look into it and see if it's a possibility?
Shereen, this is Craig Rowe, IT Director. We can look at a notification subscription-type system for that page specifically as updates are, are available. I will discuss with the vendor and let Jill Goldsmith know as soon as possible.
Okay, thanks, Craig.
Ms. Davis?
Yes. Frank Messina, go ahead.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I appreciate the meeting and the information. I also want to give a kind of a thumbs up to the process that you use with this meeting. It was pretty effective, and someone like myself who's hearing disabled, it's much clearer to hear people speak through the video. In fact, it's much better than the cable television on Channel 18. So I think this is a very effective way to communicating meetings for the selves and the public. But thank you very much.
Yeah, Shereen, it's Bob.
Hi.
Hi, I just wanted to follow up on the earlier caller regarding the text notification, and, and let people know if they don't know that Massachusetts does have, Massachusetts, the state has a system where you can get text alerts on, on information that comes from the state directly. I know the question was more geared towards what we could do, but until we get a system set up and running, if people want to get information directly from the state on their phone, they can text COVIDMA to 888-777. And you can get those text alerts from the state of Massachusetts directly on your phone.
Thank you, Bob. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to ask a question or make a comment before we move on? None?
Hey, Madam Chair, this is Peter.
Hi, Peter. Go ahead.
Can I just make one more question for Dr. Bob?
Absolutely.
As we were, you were asked some questions, you know, we have a number of LED signs that are being used to funnel people around where all the work is being done. Could any of those be used as you enter the town to tell people from out of state to, to hunker down when they get here?
Right now, we have one side at the, one of our electronic message signs at the transfer station telling people to maintain a social distance. The other, one of our other signs we have on Main Street right by Kroll Road, that was originally the social distancing message. We changed it to the out-of-state self-quarantine 14-day message last Friday. And I will tell you, there's one of those electronic message boards at Exit 10 coming off the Mid-Cape Highway with the same message. I'm not aware that they've put that message up. I know on the message boards on, like, the mass highways and all, they had them. I don't know if they've done anything individually, like coming across the bridges yet or not.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions from anyone or Dr. Bob before we say thank you to him for his hard work?
Shereen, it's Dean.
Go ahead.
I just, a comment and follow-up to what Peter said, because I drove a length of 28 coming in from Howard's. And the first sign you see where it advises out-of-state arrivals is at the Kroll Road intersection. There's nothing farther out on 28. Is there, is there any availability of an additional electronic sign, Bob?
We could certainly look at that. One of the reasons why we put that there was because it was near CVS and the grocery store, as well as, but yeah, we could, we'd have two other signs that right now are being used with the wastewater project, but I can certainly look into repurposing those.
It would, I think the one at Kroll Road is a good, a very good location for the reason you said. Two other points. I didn't want to leave the impression that I was necessarily in agreement with Governor Baker's less stringent stand vis-à-vis the governor of Rhode Island, but I was just suggesting that it's probably his, his authority to do something. I do acknowledge what Chairman Beckley was saying about the authorities of boards, of boards of health. But the last question, and perhaps it's an unfair question, but we have two physicians, and I know their specialty is not infectious diseases, I don't think it is. Every, every time you turn on television, you see the number of mortalities, and you see the number of cases. But those cases in the United States, and those cases, as I understand it, are cases that have been tested and shown positive. But in terms of the percentage of potential mortalities, you would need, as the denominator, the broader number, which we don't know, because we haven't tested the whole population, and we may never. So the rate of, of, of death could be much, much, much less than, and I'm not downplaying the significance or the virulence of this particular disease, but could, but the rate of death could be much, much less than what it is, what it is now, which is maybe one and a half percent or 2% if you, if you use only the, the number of confirmed cases. Am I reading that right? I'm thinking, for example, that when you, when you take a drug and you look at the side effects, and some of the more horrific side effects on a drug are listed as testing at maybe a 1% chance that such and such is going to happen to you. It just seems to me awfully, awfully frightening to see those numbers without that kind of an explanation. If any, if either of the physicians or anyone on the Board of Health has any comment, I'd love to hear it.
This is Alan Ward. I sent Judy a video done by an intensivist at Wild Cornell Hospital, and it was his description of the course of the illness for his family, and a bunch of questions that went with it. But your, your comment is right, the percent of, of people who need intubation and respiration, and the people who die is really quite small when you take the whole big picture.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? And then I'm just going to move on. Any other questions? Did I hear somebody? All right, I'm not hearing anybody. Jill, are you, do you have any quick update on this from the staff and town managers' perspective that you can, okay, thank you.
Thank you. So we have been on critical services mode since March 24, and that will stay in place until April 7th, in compliance with Governor Baker's order. We've been having conference call updates three times a week at a staff level, including the board, Chairman for the Board of Health, as well as the Chairman from the Board of Selectmen. So we're continuing to review this. We're having all of our meetings via conference call or Teams video staff. We have our department head meetings every Tuesday at 9:00. And again, we're assessing to see if there's any, any changes about the restrictions. Right now, we have no public access to town offices. The only access for the public at this point is at the transfer station, and we have not recommended a change in operations or hours. Staff has personal protective equipment, and we're now trying to rotate DPW staff in and out, as well as staffing for other town offices. The most traffic we're seeing at 549 Main Street is people wanting to drop off their tax bill or pay their bill in cash, and we're still encouraging people to send it via mail or to pay online, and we've had a tremendous response. So that's good news. And again, we're just continuing to monitor emails. Calls have been forwarded for some of the departments that have remote locations, and our office in particular, we're trying to alternate between Shawna and I. And if there's any gaps in any services or phone calls not returned, just let us know. We'll get right on it. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. Does my board have any questions for Jill? Peter, any questions for Jill?
No, Madam Chair.
Dean, any questions for Jill?
No, Madam Chair.
Cory?
No, all set. Thank you.
Okay, and Jeff?
Yeah, no, thank you. Thanks.
Does the Board of Health, John, do you have a question for Jill?
No, no, I don't.
Okay, any of your board members?
Nope.
Okay.
No.
All right. Any questions from the public for Jill?
Yeah, Steve Buckley, I have a question.
Stephen, go right ahead.
Okay. Right now, it looks like we're using the Channel 18 to televise a phone conference, but the Teams platform, Microsoft Teams, can be used for video as well. So things like regulatory boards, and I know Kate Cod Commission has used it to show, to share their screens, so you can actually see drawings and so forth. The planning board used it last, here last week, but it was funneled through Channel 18, so you couldn't see anything. And it was a 32nd lag, so it was virtually impossible, certainly less than what a in-person meeting would allow for the public. So I'm concerned about that, but I'd like to be able to offer some suggestions about how to improve it, since this is going to last a couple of months, not a couple of weeks. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Jill from the public? All right.
Madam Chair, it's Jill.
Yeah.
So we're planning on holding a Selectmen's meeting on Monday, April 6. And I was hoping we could do it video and being able to share the screen to show the agenda packet. We're just working through some of the, the loop issues we have because of our live broadcasts, but I was hoping if, if the members of the board are amenable to it, to actually do a video meeting using Teams on Monday.
Any, any comments from the, from the board on that? Jeff?
I'll do anything that's convenient and prudent, anything, anything you want.
Cory?
I'm game, Craig, and I are going to be connecting shortly to work out some of the kinks on my end, but I'm game for that.
Peter, any comment or?
Yeah, I, I think that's, we, we used it for our working groups, and, and it was, it was effective. Everybody has to have the, the right, you know, have, have it work on their computer, but it, I thought it worked pretty well where the person who's talking or the, or the screens are shown, and then even the moderator can, can mute people if they have to. I've used it with other boards that I'm on, and either with Zoom or with, with Team, and I, I think we should be able to do that.
Okay. Dean?
I'm open to anything.
Okay, I am as well. I just, I understand that this is extraordinary circumstances, and open, openness is important and transparency is important. So we're doing the best we can here. We, and, and does that give you enough direction, Jill, or do you need anything further from us on that?
I'm all set, and when we post the agenda for the meeting, it will give the public directions of how to participate as well.
Thank you very much. Thanks. Okay, so any other items or any issues that anybody wants to discuss before we move on and close out our meeting? Jeff?
No, I just, again, I would, I would echo earlier sentiments, and many thanks to Dr. Bob and Jill as well. I think that the town team has done a great job, and, and I would just, you know, encourage them to keep up the good work. And I appreciate all the efforts. I really do. Board of Health as well.
Dean, do you have any comments or closing remarks?
I agree with everything Jeff just said.
Okay, great. How about you?
I'll echo the previous comments. Thank you.
Peter?
Yeah, ditto. I, I agree with my colleagues.
I do, too. I just want to give a big shout out to the transfer station personnel and their, the, the way they're conducting themselves and their, and in, in their manner and taking and following the safety protocol, but, but out there for us to continue to, you know, keep the transfer station open. It's, it's, if everybody should, when they dump off their trash, they should just simply say thank you or give a thumbs up. I know people don't want to be too close, and social distancing is what we're supposed to do. A thumbs up and a thank you, I think, goes a long way in appreciation. And Jill, if you could just let that department know how much we are appreciative of, of the work they're doing, I, I think my board would probably concur with my sentiments on that. Saying that none, is there any final, before I close, I'm going to close out our meeting and then turn it over to the Chair of the Board of Health, and he can wrap it up. So can I get a motion to adjourn the Board of Selectmen side of this meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Peter Kukolos, the second was?
Jeff.
Jeff Dykens. Okay. All those in favor, we're going to do a roll call, and that will be our call off, and we do that. Selectmen Dykens?
Aye.
Selectmen Matters?
Aye.
Selectmen Nacastro?
Aye.
Selectmen Kukolos?
Aye.
And the Chair says aye. We are signing off at 5:08. Now I'll turn it over to the Board of Health Chairman, John Beckley.
Thank you very much. I'd like to call for a motion from a Board of Health member to-
So may.
-join our meeting as well.
So may, Bert.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Who made the second?
Ron Roman.
Did you, did you have to approve the minutes from last meeting?
No, we're going to defer that to a future meeting.
Oh, okay.
Do we have any discussion on adjourning? If not, I'd like to call the roll for Board of Health members. If you're in favor of adjourning, say aye or yes. Dr. Hanson?
Yes.
Dr. Ward?
Yes.
Ed Sheehan?
Yes.
Burton Siegel?
Yes.
Ron Roman?
Yes.
Okay, I vote aye as well. So the Board of Health meeting has been adjourned. I'm going to turn this back over to Judy if Judy wants to.
No, I think we're all set. Thank you, everyone. Great job.
Hey, Judy, share that.